From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting, originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue, Bakersfield, California. Kern County's vision is to create and maintain a customer-centered county government designed to garner the confidence, support, and trust of the people we serve. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
Good morning, Kern County. Madam Clerk, very nice to see you. Would you please call the roll?
Supervisor Gleason.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Maggert.
Here.
Supervisor Couch.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Here. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Welcome to the Tuesday, June 16, 2020, meeting of the Board of Supervisors. We will begin today's meeting with the flag salute, led by our very own Supervisor Zach Scrivner. Following the flag salute, please remain standing for a moment of prayer, silence, or meditation, whichever you prefer.
Please place your hand over your heart, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we are going to take back up, Kathy, an old tradition of ours started by Supervisor Couch, which is really fun and excellent opportunity to highlight really the leadership role that Kern has taken in spay and neuter, and of course, progressive adoption, and ultimately, our goal of no kill, which Kern County is rapidly moving towards. So, I want to call our hero and leader in that movement, Mr. Nick Cullen, Director of Animal Services, to come up with our Pet of the Week. This should put us all in a good mood this morning. So, Mr. Cullen, please come forward.
Wow, a hero.
Really? Yeah, I believe that.
Welcome back to Board of Supervisor Pet of the Week I have with me this morning. She's got several names. We named her Buffy. Chief County Council named her Pumpkin, and then shortly thereafter renamed her Muffiny Boo Boo. But we're going to stick with Buffy for now.
Fantastic. Vampire Slayer, I like that.
Buffy is about a two-year-old. She's a little Yorkie mix. She actually just came to us yesterday, less than 24 hours ago.
Oh, wow.
She'll be available for adoption this Friday morning. I did want to mention that, like any other business, like any other county agency, our services have changed the way we deliver them. So if somebody's interested in adopting Buffy, she'll be available Friday morning. It is an appointment-based process now. So folks that want to adopt an animal from the shelter, you're going to come down to the shelter, and you'll be given an appointment to view the animal and adopt the animal.
How exciting.
It's a bit of a different process, but we still are hopeful that we're going to place every adoptable animal in a good home.
Oh, we sure will. I assume future adoptive parents should wear a mask when they come in. I see you in one now, thank you.
Yes, it is a requirement to enter the animal shelter.
Okay, fantastic. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
For being flexible, and to our little vampire slayer, best of luck to you, Buffy. Thank you, Nick, for all your hard work. The County of Kern has repeatedly provided notice that as a result of the declared federal, state, and local emergencies due to the COVID-19 pandemic, and in light of the Governor's order, this Board of Supervisors meeting is not physically open to the public. Our deepest apologies for that reality. Testimony and general public comment can be given through email or telephone to the Clerk of the Board prior to today's meeting, and live comments through teleconference will be heard during the meeting. We will begin by considering the consent agenda. All items listed with the capital C, capital A above the item are considered to be routine and non-controversial by staff. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one motion. If a member of the audience wishes to comment or ask questions regarding an item or items on the consent agenda, they may do so prior to a vote being taken on the consent agenda. A member of the Board may remove an item from the consent agenda, and it will be considered in its listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the Board concerning the item before action is taken. Any member of the public may also comment on any closed-session item during this period. So consent items begin on page two, and they include items one through three, and six, and seven. On page three, items eight through 14. On page four, items 15 through 22. On page five, items 23 through 29. On page six, items 32 through 37. On page seven, items 38 through 44. On page eight, items 45, 46, and 48 through 52. On page nine, items 50 through 53 through 60. And finally, on page 10, items 61 to 64. Kathy, did I get that right? Excuse me, Madam Clerk, is what I meant.
Yes, yes.
It is correct. Thank you very much. Do we have comment either in writing or waiting regarding this matter?
No, we do not.
Okay. Well, then I will... Are there Board members who would like to remove any items from consent or comment on them? Okay, seeing no one punched in, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved. All eyes.
Okay, fantastic. We're going to move to the public presentations portion of this meeting, which is reserved for persons to address this Board on matters that are within the jurisdiction properly of the Kern County Board of Supervisors, but not on today's specific agenda. Are there members of the public, Kathy, that have either written in or are waiting to be heard?
Yes. Madam Chair, members of the Board, we received a voice message and some written documentation that you have in front of you from Mr. Adam Cohen. We also received an email that you have in front of you that I have recorded. So we're going to first play a recorded message from Adam Cohen, followed by a message from Mary Sue. And then we also have one person who is waiting on the line to address you via teleconference. Before we play the recorded message from Mr. Cohen, I wanted to disclose that embedded in his message was a recording that he included that contained profanity. So per our regulations, the profanity was omitted in the conversation. However, all Board members yesterday received this recording so that you could hear the recording in its unedited... That it was unedited when you heard it.
Thank you.
So let's go ahead and play both messages now.
Chairwoman Perez and members of the Board, as you are aware, there has been a data breach posting the grant deeds of residents on the Internet by the City of Bakersfield. As you will see from the attachments, this data breach was extensive and occurred over many years. Kern County must take immediate action and work with the city to develop a plan that, one, identifies the addresses that were posted on the Internet; two, notifies the households that were impacted; three, provides impacted individuals' identity theft and title fraud protection; and four, takes additional protective measures for victims of violent crime who had their confidential addresses revealed without their consent. To understand how this has impacted me, I want the Board to hear the doorbell recording of the threats of my assailant showing up at my home.
Adam. Hey, Adam. Um... My rapist got my address from a county deed posted on the city's website. Any claim that the city didn't know my address was confidential is false. Here's what the former deputy city attorney had to say.
I don't... Because I remember when you first submitted that card, we had this conversation originally, that was years ago. I know it's come up at different times, you know, that you've raised the issue several times, but I just think we just communicated to everyone that was involved that that address was, you know, subject to limitation, and there was supposed to be sensitivity in how it was used, you know, used only for particular situations that were designated in the law. I know that we clearly articulated, though, to... I know community development was obviously kind of a holder of that information through your purchase of the house. I think they were aware of the situation, and I'm sure the clerk was. So that we made it very clear, we understood the issue, made it very clear to those departments that we worked with, that, you know, it is supposed to be only utilized in certain situations.
The Board must take action now. The safety of victims depends on it. Thank you.
This email is from Mary Sue. Why can't our leaders tell the truth? Bakersfield city staff assured us that no addresses had been leaked, but clearly that's not the case. I can see my address on the Wayback Machines archive of this city's website. This is incredibly concerning. I think we have all had instances where a quote-unquote Nigerian prince emails us spam with some personal information trying to steal our identity. The city posted our addresses online without our knowledge and consent, and then lied to us and denied any wrongdoing. Well, the web archive doesn't lie. Now we have to worry about identity theft? Don't Bakersfield residents have enough to worry about? What is Kern County doing to fix this?
Madam Chair, we do not have a caller on the line. We had someone signed up. If that caller wishes to provide public comment in the afternoon session, we will hear from them. But at this point, that is all the public comment we have for today, for this morning.
Thank you very much. And the public, excuse me, can call in at 2:00 PM to offer public comment this afternoon. If they missed this morning for whatever reason, you do have another opportunity at 2:00. You can get in the queue, but I do ask you, get in there by 2:00, so that we're prepared for you and can hear you and take your input.
Yes, and Madam Chair, just so the public is aware, they must call in advance so that they can receive the call-in number and the code so that they can be in the queue. So my suggestion is if any members of the public wish to address the Board this afternoon at 2:00 PM, under public presentations, that they should call the following number at their earliest convenience to get signed up. That number is 868-3605. Again, that is 661-868-3605. It is on our website.
Thank you. And so for the 2:00 PM call, what time should folks call in?
They could start calling in now to get signed up. The earlier the better.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, I have a question regarding that.
Oh, please. Supervisor Maggert.
Thank you. I'd like to ask County Council, Margot Rezon, if you could look into this issue. Is there... It keeps being brought up. We didn't take any action. I don't think we've made any change in the way the county has dealt with this item, this complaint that continues to come to us. So Ms. Rezon, is it possible for you to determine whether or not there is any change in the county's display or revelation of this information? And if indeed it presents a problem or a danger to anyone, is there a change that we could make that would protect them? And if there's not, what do we need to do in order to make that kind of change?
Ms. Rezon?
Thank you. Madam Chair and Supervisor Maggert, I've looked into this a little bit, and I have some information that I could share with the Board now, and then if you want additional information, I can report back later. What I have discovered is that Mr. Cohen bought property through the city as part of a redevelopment program, and I have verified with Lorelei Oviott that the county was not involved at all in that area of property. So it's a city piece of property, and the county's only role in this matter is that the document that was the deed to be recorded was sent to the county's recorder's office to be recorded. The county recorder, in keeping with its legal obligations, recorded the deed. The county was... Had no way of knowing that Mr. Cohen participates or is covered under a... It's called the Safe at Home Program, where an individual can request that their physical address not be recorded, and instead, it's a false address that is recorded for the person. Mr. Cohen participates or is covered under that program. The county was not made aware of that at the time that the deed was recorded as requested by the city. So the deed did... Or does reveal Mr. Cohen's physical address. The recorder, as I said earlier, must record a document and cannot unilaterally redact or remove information. The only way that a recorder can redact or remove information is by way of a court order. Under the Safe at Home Program, there is a remedy available to Mr. Cohen, which is to bring in action seeking injunctive or declarative relief. And if the jury or a court finds that a violation has occurred, meaning that somehow the Safe at Home Program was not abided by, in this case, that his physical address was posted, then the court can grant injunctive or declarative relief. And then if Mr. Cohen were to have that court order, then our county recorder would be able to redact or remove that information. I know Mr. Cohen has been writing letters urging legislators to beef up the Safe at Home Program to provide for more ways that situations like this could be remedied. One option would be for the county to work with Mr. Cohen or to, on its own, encourage legislation, legislators, to change, to make the pending legis... Or the current legislation more robust to have more protections. That's... It doesn't... At the moment, the county is without recourse to legally remove the information from the recorder's site.
While the circumstance for the gentleman you reference is regrettable, my concern really is for whether or not this might happen over and over again with other people. So is there a way you could coordinate with the city to see if that is... The City of Bakersfield, to see if that is the case, and see if the two of you can work out some arrangement by which going forward, if these addresses should have been masked in some way, that they can be masked going forward? Sir? Thank you. I appreciate letting us know if you can do that. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Supervisor Maggert, thank you for requesting that clarification and thinking about that issue and its incredible implications. Thank you, Ms. Rezon. This is a serious issue, impacts people's personal lives and well-being, so thank you very much. Really, really appreciate it. We're going to move on to Board Member announcements and reports. Going to ask at this time, before we receive a presentation or an update from Supervisors Maggert and Scrivner on our ad hoc committee, I am going to ask our very own Matt Constantine to please come forward and to give us an update, recognize that this is sort of a 24-hour update that we receive, given how incredibly complex these matters are. So I appreciate your leadership and your patience during these most trying times. Mr. Constantine, it's good to see you.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good, good morning, Madam Chair. Um, so just, just briefly, um, we gave a briefing to the media yesterday where we reviewed our current, uh, statistics. Uh, of particular note is, um, as the county has been made aware, we are on a state monitoring list. The state is tracking our local metrics very carefully, uh, to see how we are performing. Um, that website doesn't appear to be, um, updated as often as we would like, because we are now, we were meeting the metrics, but still on the list. And we have had, based on that, um, those metrics, we've had a call with the state. It's part of their process where we review what we're doing. It's a good conference call, and we will have more as our metrics change, to kind of review what actions we've been taking locally to help get the message out, to help with preventative measures. And the state was, uh, comfortable with the actions that we have taken and didn't suggest any further actions beyond just continued monitoring our statistics. Um, we are struggling a little bit with our skilled nursing facilities. Um, I think Supervisor Maggard has some issues he wants to bring up and talk more fully about, um, later. But we have, um, 12 of our 19 skilled nursing facilities that are reporting positive cases in workers. That's presenting a challenge for us. Um, I'll, I'll probably defer some of those comments to later in the Board Member comments. I think Supervisor Maggard has some specific questions he would want answers to. We did release yesterday some modeling. The state, um, has a new modeling system that allows counties to input data into a model that helps us track where we are today and where our hospitalizations and ICU cases will be in the future. Uh, that tool is helpful. It is really good, uh, at about 30 days out, but after 30 days, the state says it's less reliable and asks us to run it every 30 days to check. It does show that our ICU and hospitalization cases will continue to increase as they have. Uh, we are tracking along this curve as expected. That is causing some potential concerns. Um, we do believe that we will have, at the peak, using this model, enough beds for our hospitalizations, but we are running into some concerns with our ICU, uh, capacity. Uh, right now, and I think, um, KGOV actually has the model up, and if KGOV wouldn't mind, or the clerk showing the model, it's an electronic version of it, and I think Supervisor Gleason had some questions about this model also. This, uh, model shows, so, so the blue line is the actual model, uh, the squiggly red line is our actual data as of that date. There's two horizontal lines, it's hard to see. The first one is our ICU capacity under normal conditions, and I think that says 78. So we have 78 beds that could be used as of the date, I think it was yesterday, where we could, um, uh, help those that needed an ICU bed. The model, of course, crosses over that capacity, um, on July 28th, not far from today, with 78 beds. The hospitals have pulled together, and, uh, we, we meet routinely with all 10 acute care hospitals, and they have developed a method to convert, uh, hospital beds into ICU beds under an extreme surge, um, situation. And they are actually able to add, uh, or to create a total of 294 ICU beds, which is not normally done. Unfortunately, that gets us only to November 13th of 2020. At that date, and I understand, this is a model, these, these figures change often. At that date, we exceed even that surge capacity of ICU beds. The model that the state has released shows that we have a peak ICU, uh, demand in February of 2021, of 436 ICU beds, but our surge capacity is 294. It's really important to note that this is just a model. It's based on variables that we put in today, and it changes often. We have had success at bringing that number down. Earlier models that the state showed us was higher. We have flattened the curve. We have brought those cases down. It is working, but this model shows that we may have work ahead of us. Um, this is a challenge, though, that we're in together with the hospitals. Uh, we are strengthening our messaging on, uh, the, the actions that we've taken over those last two months have worked. We need to continue those efforts. Um, although we want COVID-19 to be something of the past, we would, we're anxious to resume our normal lives, this is a reminder that we need to stay the course, to put all of our efforts into keeping those cases down and to keep that exposure down, because we don't want to be in a position where we have more demands for an ICU bed than we have capacity. The model is based on, um, a lot of variables, as I've mentioned, from our hospitalization rate and our ICU rate, which is the current rate that we plug in, to hospital beds, to when the interventions were implemented in the county, and most importantly, to the degree of compliance with those interventions. Meaning, do we wear masks when we're in the grocery store and we can't maintain that six-foot separation between the other shopper? Are we adhering to those business guidelines that have come out that said, in restaurants, we should separate more? In a hair salon, we should separate more and both wear masks? We need to ensure that we continue those efforts, because adherence to those preventative measures has the most, the single most impact, uh, on our cases. So even a, a slightly increased level of compliance with those require, with those guidance documents would dramatically affect that curve and likely push us below that surge level. It's also important to note that we have the alternative care site ready and, um, equipped to go. We need a 48-hour notice, and that ACS at the fairgrounds could be stood up. It is not for ICU beds, it is for non-ICU care, but we have thrown that back to the hospitals to say, if that 250-bed field hospital could be used in any capacity, it's for us to work together to use it. Maybe we can take non-COVID patients, low-acuity hospitals, hospitalized patients, and put them into that field hospital if needed. So we're exploring all options. We meet, uh, weekly with all 10 CEOs as we explore the model changing and explore options. Um, it's a good team approach. There's still work to be done, uh, but there's a lot of progress being made. Uh, Madam Chair, that really concludes the updates that, uh, I had from yesterday. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Uh, Matt, excuse me, thank you for that update. Uh, I'd like to remind the public that things change on a pretty regular basis, based on our own behavior and, uh, host of factors that are out of our control as well. So I appreciate the regular updates and letting folks know how they can, you know, get us through this next few months by social distancing and, and wearing a mask, and, and hopefully, uh, we can do that in a non-controversial way and, uh, look out for our neighbors, right, without having to make political statements about it. Uh, I certainly have no desire to do that. Uh, with that said, uh, your sense about testing, my side has been moved from the senior center, uh, those places are now open with restrictions, and to the fairgrounds. My site does not require an appointment. Folks can show up and get registered, and it's the, one of only two drive-throughs. Uh, other places require an appointment, so, uh, how are things going? Uh, you know, how do you feel about our testing capacity, and do we anticipate, you know, a long testing period moving forward?
So testing in Kern County is going well. We have capacity that is far greater than most counties. Our, our sites are underutilized, though, and we can actually test more. You know, the fundamental concept here is you identify cases early, you isolate cases then early, and you do that contact tracing. So those three components are all dependent upon early testing. The fact that it's free, that some can do drive-throughs, that don't charge, that just wants you to come, and you can come as often as you want, is fantastic. We have more capability, and we constantly change as you want to move your site. We've moved other sites as the demand changes and it ebbs and flows. We're working with all city managers, we have routine calls with all cities to try to find the best location. In particular, the City of Arvin has stepped way up to help us promote, uh, one of the sites in Arvin because it was underutilized, and that changed significantly. We're grateful for their help. So everything we can do to promote those sites, um, to provide early identification is key in helping us solve this. It is also one of the metrics that we're monitored against routinely. Um, and so, uh, testing and having, um, that early identification is, is key. So I am grateful for the opportunities that we've had from the state, from the governor, and from using county dollars to actually stand up sites, uh, has been fantastic. The Emergency Operations Center that operates under our fire chief has been fantastic. They constantly adapt, they're sending out new agreements, they're reviewing the process. We get daily updates on numbers. It is working well.
You forgot Sean Penn.
Yes, ma'am, I did forget Sean Penn. I'm sure you have something to say there about Mr. Penn.
Well, thank you. That was very helpful and clear, and I just want to reiterate for the public, this is free, you can get tested and then be safer than you might ordinarily be, and it's also peace of mind. I've been tested, uh, is a remarkably, uh, stressful kind of process to wait for results and, and think about, you know, how life will change according to those results. So I was pleased that we tested negative, we've been, uh, as safe, I think, as we reasonably can, but certainly, exposure can happen in many ways, and we just want to be cautious and knowledgeable. So Matt, thank you for that. I'm so grateful to the colleagues, to my, my colleagues to my left, Supervisor Maggard and Scrivner, they have led the charge on getting some clarity and bringing the right professionals to the table, of which I am so grateful for. So at this time, I'm going to ask Supervisor Maggard to, uh, lead a presentation. If he has questions for you, thank you, Matt. Uh, but the more we can provide to the public, of course, uh, we're grateful for. I think, uh, we're all in this together, Matt, and, uh, you know, we're going to get to the finish line, as I think, uh, the best county in the Central Valley handling these matters, and, and I'm quite proud of that. So Supervisor Maggard, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I don't want to, uh, get in the way of Supervisor Couch, if you have a question regarding the, Matt. Okay, thank you. So, um, you, you, let's do it in the order first, since you were just up, uh, Mr. Constantine. Um, and, and I want to thank, first of all, Mike, all of my colleagues. This entire Board has, uh, demonstrated that they're willing to do whatever it takes to protect our public. Uh, in a call yesterday that we were on with the, the state, um, California Department of Public Health, uh, it was quite clear from their comments that we are ahead of virtually all other counties in California in how we're dealing with our issues. Uh, that's evident from both of the, the things, uh, reports that we're going to ask this morning about our loan program and about how we're dealing with this, uh, public, uh, health crisis, particularly with regard to skilled nursing facilities. So I want to thank all of my colleagues for your willingness to go along and be a part of this. Uh, you've just been, um, fabulous in, in your support, uh, and your leadership that you guys have demonstrated, so thank you for that. Uh, so specifically regarding the issue of, uh, skilled nursing facilities, Mr. Constantine, um, it, there is no more vulnerable group of people in our community than those inside the skilled nursing facilities. They cannot leave, they are bound to be there, they are completely at the discretion, and, um, their fates are in the hands of people that, you know, they, they cannot control or barely influence those on their own. Uh, even their families are isolated from them. I watched a, uh, congressional hearing on this, and it was just tragic to hear stories about families who can't go in to see their family members. They, one, one lady went to the window, uh, her, her mother was admitted on, um, December 31st to a facility right down the street from her house. She would watch that, uh, she, she chose that facility because she wanted to be able to keep an eye on her mom. Uh, things began to change, they wouldn't let her in to see her mom. She went to the window, looked through the window, and this lady saw her mother laying on the bed with no clothes and, uh, gravely ill, uh, and she, the, the mom succumbed to the disease, uh, just shortly thereafter. That, that happened in Louisiana, it didn't happen in, in California, certainly not Bakersfield or Kern County. But, uh, there are stories like that all across the nation. So with regard to these skilled nursing facilities, uh, not only is it just a hellacious environment for those that are there, uh, and the danger that they're in, but it, it imperils the livelihood, the, uh, economic stability of all of us because of the consequences of this. So could you speak to that for a moment, and then I'd like to ask you just a couple questions? Uh, and, and feel free to, you know, you, you, you take the lead if, I don't need to ask any questions if you get all of it out.
Supervisor Maggard through the chair, thank you. Um, so first off, yes, it's important to recognize that these are our residents, they are at their most vulnerable state, so we don't want to just forget, they're not just numbers, these are people, so I appreciate you highlighting that. With that said, though, skilled nursing facilities are completely and solely regulated by the state. The county does not even enter those facilities. However, we are suffering, um, the potential economic impact for, uh, what I believe is the state's failure to take immediate and adequate action to provide controls and response when COVID-19 strikes a skilled nursing facility. There, there's, so very briefly, there's five areas of concern for me, just to highlight. The first one is our skilled nursing facilities, we have two that had, have, are suffering an outbreak, a significant uncontrolled outbreak. There are others, but there's two that are struggling today. Those two are still accepting, admitting new patients. That's not okay. Not when they haven't controlled the outbreak, not when they haven't instilled the right disease control methods, not when they don't know how to Dawn and Doof PPE correctly. That's not okay. That, the state needs to intervene and to stop that.
Mr. Constantine, can I interject something there? We, we've talked about, and we've appointed, um, George N. Armstrong to be our, um, Accountability Officer for Skilled Nursing Facilities, and we, uh, declared publicly that we would out by name those facilities that are not complying with us, that are not complying with state requirements and that are, um, uh, in our observation, not, not cooperating. So I think it's important that the public understand who it is that is still accepting patients when they are not complying with the, uh, all the edicts of the state, uh, on how to isolate and protect people. So please feel free to, uh, to speak by name about those facilities who are not being responsible.
So Kingston Healthcare Center is one of the ones that is struggling with a continued outbreak, and they are, their census continues to go up.
Which means they're putting new people in a facility that is not adequately isolating ill people and ill staff from healthy people.
Yes, sir. And the second is Valley Convalescent Hospital, also in Bakersfield, also suffering from an outbreak and also increasing their census. The second area is the state required all skilled nursing facilities to put together a plan to test all employees and all residents, which is fantastic. They gave them three weeks to develop a plan, not, not to implement the plan, to develop the plan. We didn't want to wait, and we, and we've talked about this before, the Public Health developed our own SNF skilled nursing facility testing, um, program where we send five nurses into these facilities, and they're, every day they're going in. They show up to work at 4:30 in the morning because they want to beat the heat, and sometimes they have to do this outdoors, and they are testing employees at our cost. Those five employees, the actual tests themselves are on our dime because we didn't want to wait three weeks for a plan. Those tests have resulted in positive employees. I will tell you that, uh, some of the skilled nursing facilities were reluctant to allow us to test, because in their words, if we identified a positive employee, then we would make them go home and not be at work, and then they would not have staffing. The approach that they're taking, that a couple took, clearly tells you, clearly demonstrates, they don't understand the significance of the issue. So that plan is still not developed. We've told every skilled nursing facility we will come in and test, and we expect you to do it routinely, and that's what the state's asked. If you have a positive employee, you have to do it every seven days. If you don't have positive employees, it's every 14 days. Well, the Leno District Skilled Nursing Facility has not created a program, and when we said it's been seven days, they said, yeah, we're sorry, we can't do it. We said, I'll tell you what, why don't you take your employees to our free testing site? We'll do it there on the county's dime. No, we can't get there. So to this day, they have not reinstituted a plan. We are going back again, because we don't want to wait. That, that troubles me, that not only has the site not instituted that practice, the state has not demanded that that be changed. They are also required to submit mitigation plans. So the state said every skilled nursing facility- So the state said, every skilled nursing facility needs to submit a plan to control outbreaks. We asked for the plans, we've received Georgiana Armstrong, who's, by the way, is sick today and is home.
She'll be fine, she just happens to be sick today.
Right, right. She's, right. She asked for the plans and has received some of them, and as she says, there's a lot of cut and paste. It says, she is not convinced they're adequate, and we have no evidence to show that they've implemented the plans, which is clearly demonstrated because of those facilities that are experiencing an outbreak, nothing has changed. And in fact, 12 of our 19 skilled nursing facilities have positive employees now. In particular, we have three additional Windsor Post-Acute Center in Bakersfield, Golden Valley Living Center in Shafter, and Parkview Julian Convalescent are all now, in the last couple of days, reporting cases and deaths. That has changed in the last couple of days. Disease tracking, the third area or the fourth area, disease tracking is not being done.
Could we pause there for just a second? I want to expose one more area that I think there's a deficiency with regard to that. And I thank my colleagues for being willing to support this accountability and the depth to which we're exploring this because these lives are at stake. The, I've been asking for weeks of the state and for records that would reveal to us which employees are working at which facilities. I think the underlying Achilles heel of all of these facilities, you know, there's not a single person inside the facility who's a patient or a resident who gets to go outside. They're isolated from the world. The only way they're getting sick is people, particularly staff, and they have no visitors, so particularly staff are walking in the facility with the disease. And some of those staff are working at multiple facilities. For weeks, we have been asking the state to give us some record of, are there any staff that are working at multiple facilities? Can we develop a pattern? Is there any indication that maybe this facility is tracking it to that facility? To this day, they still have not given us, the state has not given us that information, and neither have the facilities. So that's an area that we're pursuing, but, you know, if we're going to hold everybody accountable, it's going to include the state about that.
Disease tracking. So we've asked the state to provide us daily updates on the number of positive residents, the number of positive employees, and the number of deaths associated with COVID-19 at each site. The state actually has a website now. We have now five sources of information we get daily. Every one of those differs. They don't reconcile. I can't get an accurate count of the number of employees that are sick. I can't even get an accurate count of the number of residents that have passed away from COVID-19. If I don't have accurate data, I can't track our progress or how serious it is. I have tried endlessly to ask the state to reconcile. What they post on the website is wrong. That's troubling to me that we can't even track the numbers correctly. And finally, my last component of this is, and it somewhat summarizes the issue, is the state, California Department of Public Health, has a licensing and certification program. They're the ones in charge of regulating our skilled nursing facilities. They are not enforcing as they should. They send out requirements, they call them all facility letters. They're basically new requirements that when COVID-19 comes out, that they need to do additional actions. They're not enforcing those facility letters. Basic disease control procedures are not being enforced. When we're there testing, we watched an employee go into their car with their dirty COVID gowns and masks and take off the PPE in their car. That is completely inappropriate. You've contaminated the car, your hands are contaminated, and if Supervisor Maggard's concerned about maybe going to another facility to work a different shift, but even if you're going home to your family, presents a serious issue. Testing is not being enforced, the staffing is not stabilized. We've had a few more people call out, we heard two employees, one employee quit this morning and one stayed home because they were scared to death. That's what the word was. Our worry is that this is going to quickly develop into something that we can't contain. And to summarize again, these are people that we're trying to help. The county is doing everything we can. We've never been into these sites before. But the lack of the state's oversight is going to affect our metrics, not going to, they are affecting our metrics. They represent more, well, about half of our deaths, that number keeps changing. They represent ICU beds that are being used. And if all of these increase, we are in trouble. Something has to change. It's not appropriate for us, the county, not to have any authority or any ability to take control, yet we suffer all the consequences. Supervisor Maggard, I think that's the summary on skilled nursing facilities, unless you have other questions.
I'm happy to, I'm going to ask Mr. Zervis for some information about our loan program in a moment, but I'm certainly happy to allow my colleagues to have any questions they want to ask about this. Why don't you guys do that first, and then I'll say something?
Supervisor Couch, we're still in the presentation.
Yes.
Supervisor Maggard, thank you. And we're still going to hear from Supervisor Scrivener. But Supervisor Couch has a question.
I'm sure this depends on the level of care needed by the inhabitant of the skilled nursing facility, but is there any way possible we can use our alternative care site? Instead of somebody going into a skilled nursing facility, I mean, apparently the skilled, the alternative care site is good enough for someone who would be in a hospital, right? Have you considered that, thought about it, asked?
Supervisor Couch through the chair, so everything should be on the table, right? Whatever we need to do.
This needs to stop, so what do we do?
Yes, sir. So, yes, it's not set up for that purpose, and we need to maintain that for the surge capacity in the hospitals. It's important to note, these are for-profit corporations. They have, they have, every single one we've talked to has other facilities in other parts of the country. Several of them have them in Los Angeles, some have several in Kern County. They can pull from other resources, they can, you know, use their corporations to help. The burden is on them. It becomes difficult for us to move somebody with that high level of care that's needed into the fairgrounds. So I'm not, I don't want to say it's not impossible, it presents some other challenges. But yes, that should be on the table.
Madam Chair, can I say something?
Even if the level of care is not what it is there, it might be COVID-free.
True, they might need a higher level of care than we can provide without doctors being on site, without the equipment there and the ability to isolate and provide that specific care.
Well, I need to know more about the staffing at our alternative care site, apparently, then. I assumed there was going to be medical staff.
There are. So there's usually, depending on how it's used, it would be mostly nursing staff that would be there, not doctors on site.
Thank you. Supervisor Maggard, my apologies.
No problem. Excuse me for interrupting. I want to put Supervisor Couch at ease about one aspect of this. Just as the county, every county in California was required to provide surge capacity all throughout the state, so was the state with regard to skilled nursing facilities, since they're the oversight board over that. So the state, I don't know where all of them are, but they revealed to us that one of those surge capacity facilities is in Porterville. And it's a facility that was used for something else before, now it's available for this purpose. And originally, they contemplated moving patients out of Kingston. They didn't know whether they were going to move the positive, COVID-positive patients to that facility or if instead they would keep the positive patients in the facility and move the ones that don't have, the negative, positive, sorry, the ones that do not have COVID to the Porterville facility. Then they concluded that it was too stressful on any of the patients to move them because they have this comorbidity issue, they have other things that are wrong with them. So bottom line is, to our understanding, not a single patient was moved. But now weeks have gone by, and they are still in the facility, and we are, can you, maybe you can clarify this for us? We are not at all confident that they are properly isolating those that are have, that are positive for COVID and those that are negative for COVID. Can you speak to that?
As we've watched the numbers grow, the answer is clearly no. They're not taking those actions. Hospitals don't have infections like this occur. The methods are known. We can clearly demonstrate that simple disease control procedures will, are effective at preventing transmission. That is not taking place. The numbers are increasing.
So Supervisor Couch, I wanted to assure you that there is a very significant amount of capacity available for them, but the state has not moved to change the location of where those patients would be isolated.
So it's back on them, it's back on the facilities and the state?
Yeah, well, I think they're the primary, they're primarily responsible for it.
Supervisor Couch, I'm not sure if the public heard you. Could you repeat your statement?
So based on what Supervisor Maggard just said and what Mr. Constantine just said, it is falling back on the facilities themselves and the state to do something, and they've done nothing. Does that sum it up?
Well, I can't say they're doing nothing. They're doing a lot, but it's not producing the results that we want to see.
Well, when I say they're doing nothing, I thought you just said they have sites up and down the state where they could take COVID-positive or COVID-negative inhabitants of skilled nursing facilities, and not one has been moved yet.
To our understanding, is, are you any different about that, Mr. Constantine? We don't know of a single patient that has been moved to an isolation, off-site isolation place.
Thank you. That's a pathetic response from, not you, certainly not your ad hoc committee, but from those facilities and the state of California.
Mr. Constantine, is it lawful for them to be bringing in new patients under the circumstances?
So I'm not intimately familiar with the state law. It would seem to go against the whole foundation of how we protect our community. So I'm certain there is some law that says you can't do that. So again, since we've not normally been involved with skilled nursing facilities, I don't know. But if there's not, there's no point in this whole purpose, right? I mean, so I don't know.
How frustrating.
This is a quote from yesterday's conference call. "New admissions are welcome with proper isolation." Well, the problem is, there is not, in our opinion, proper isolation.
And how could there be, under the lack of resources, staffing challenges? Oh, what an incredible mess.
Supervisor Pres, just to clarify, they have the ability to pay their employees more to recruit externally, to bring in people. They oftentimes refer to us, hey, I'm down staff, can you go find me some staffing? That is the process for mutual aid that they are allowed to go through. Our response is, are you paying your employees enough? Are you giving them the training and the confidence to know that they're not going to take it home to their family? We've given them personal protective equipment. FEMA has actually made it a priority to ship to every single skilled nursing facility their own two-week supply of PPE. They're not short PPE. So it's dependent upon those organizations, the for-profits businesses, to make sure they're doing everything they can to fulfill their obligation.
Okay. Supervisor Maggard, any more from your presentation on your ad hoc?
I'd like to talk about our loan program in a moment, but I think Supervisor Gleason might have a question about this.
Supervisor Gleason.
Thanks, appreciate it, Matt. That's a horror story. So this is not directed to you, it's directed broadside to the county. What are we doing about it? And what can we do about it? And what, what do we do? We can't just sit back and repeat these horrors next week. I don't want to come here in two weeks and have the same story. I want to come here in two weeks and hear you tell us how things have changed. How do we go from where we are now to where we want to be in two weeks? Anyone with ideas?
We are in uncharted territories, that's the first issue. This doesn't happen very often, and I'm frustrated that I can't be in control of our destiny.
Got it.
I'm tired of conference calls with the state, they don't do anything. I have another one tonight. I'm hopeful that we're going to have some action items, like the first one, don't admit patients to a COVID-positive facility.
Is this a legal issue?
Sounds like it.
What a mess.
Supervisor Gleason through the chair, Mr. Constantine is correct that regulation, oversight, and the laws related to skilled nursing facilities are all at the state level. I'm not sure exactly from a legal perspective what the county could do, but I'm happy to look into that and see if there's some further action.
Do we need to be sure about that issue, if this is a legal issue or not? And if it is, we need to decide whether we're going to pursue legal... I mean, I'm getting the sounds from you that you're doing everything you can. Is that true?
I'm doing everything we possibly can.
So the public health department is doing everything, it's alerted us to the situation, and our ad hoc committee has done a fantastic job of corralling all this information and painting this picture. And now what do we do with all of it? It's a horror story, but we have to change it.
Yes, sir.
We must.
Lives depend on us changing it.
Mr. Allsop, do you have any thoughts about how we intercede in this as an organization? These are our constituents, and they're written, and they're getting the crap beat out of them. What do we do about it?
Supervisor Gleason through the chair, I appreciate the question, the opportunity. I think Matt has demonstrated for you this morning the lengths at which he has been involved in this situation from the very beginning. Your board has appointed, for lack of a better description, a SNIF czar, that is Ms. Armstrong with FIRE, who is hands-on, dealing with this on a daily basis. Matt's dealing with it on a daily basis. You have members of your own board, this ad hoc committee, dealing with it, having conversations with the state. We've surrounded, we've gone into these facilities, we've, we are assisting the state, which is an extraordinary measure that we've taken locally in testing and working with them on containment where we're able. We continue to express our frustration to the state and demand that they act. So we're doing everything that we possibly can to not just, you know, put, increasing pressure on the state and expressing our frustration, but we're trying to do the best job that we can shining a light on this problem and making sure that everybody is aware of what's going on. And we continue to try and stay engaged with the state. I've expressed my personal frustration with this at our public briefings. I'm frustrated that this was not handled better in the early days by the state. It was demonstrated to us that these congregate care facilities, especially these skilled nursing facilities, were a hotspot. It was demonstrated and played out in other states in the country. And we have a heck of a lot of these facilities throughout our state. There should have been more done in the early days to put boots on the ground in these facilities to ensure that there was adequate PPE, there were adequate protocols in place, practices, provisions, et cetera. It was not done, and here we are. And we're frustrated by that. But I believe that as a county, we're doing everything that we possibly can, directing as many resources as we possibly can. And we continue to stay, to be acutely aware that this is a massive problem and potentially could be a catastrophic problem here locally.
Got it. Thank you, Mr. Allsop, I appreciate it. I appreciate what you're saying. I think you're spot on that we've done everything we can. And that's not, what I'm saying is that's not sufficient. I mean, it's just not sufficient. That is a wonderful answer, but it's an insufficient answer. So my understanding is these are private enterprises regulated by the state.
Yes, sir.
And our issue, we think our issue, is that the state is not adequately regulating those private enterprises. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Is that common to the state of California, or is this particular to Kern County?
Unknown.
Can we find that out? Or how do we find that out?
I know our local, our surrounding counties are concerned also. The public health directors I talk to regularly have similar concerns. Fresno, Kings, Tulare have similar concerns.
Does our state representatives from Kern County and from Bakersfield understand this issue?
Yes, sir.
Senator Grove and Assemblyman Fong?
Assemblyman Fong was on the phone call with us yesterday, yes, sir. He arranged this call, actually, with the state.
Okay. And is he making recommendations out, improving regulations, how the state regulates?
He's been an advocate for us to try to get the state to respond. I'm not certain of any other action.
Has the state responded to our, to these issues? Does the state regulators understand the picture you're painting today?
Well, clearly not.
Have we told them?
Yes, sir.
Have we had personal conversations with them, saying this is it?
Yes, sir.
What is their response?
They...
Frustration?
Yes, they said, oh, we want to partner with the county, and we'll develop a task force, and we'll talk next week.
The way you're painting this picture to me, what I'm hearing is this is... The way you're painting this picture to me, what I'm hearing is this is a hand grenade that's ready to explode in the middle of this, what we're doing is controlling and flattening the curve and having great success, and in the middle of this pizza pie, we have a hand grenade that's going to blow up and it's going to splatter everybody at the table and destroy the flattening the curve and the success we've enjoyed.
If two of the 19 facilities account for 25, can count for half of the deaths, what happens if the other 19 are affected at the same levels? And there's nothing that's been implemented to prevent that from happening.
And we don't have a satisfactory answer from the state regarding this?
No, sir.
Has anyone talked to the governor?
I have not.
Okay. I don't have an answer. I'm asking a bunch of questions that I certainly don't have the wherewithal to answer, but I'm alarmed. I appreciate all the work that our commission, committee's done, but we need to go on a warpath. We need to go on a warpath, is what we need to do, and...
Mick, I would really recommend talking to Senator Shannon Grove.
Yeah.
She's the head of the statewide GOP and is in regular communication with the governor.
Right.
I think she really, excuse me, has an inside track and I think could provide some, some insight to you.
If there's any help I can do, I'll do that. I'll do more. Whatever I need to do, to understand, to do, I'm going to do.
Thank you.
But I appreciate your concern and your efforts and your whole, your, how you're approaching this, Matt. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Supervisor Scrivner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, Mr. Constantine. Good morning. I appreciate your, your presentation today. The fact that the state has had the clamps on our economy and the economies of every county in the state, and at the same time, our biggest problem when it comes to our COVID numbers come out of state-regulated facilities. I don't think the irony of that is lost on anyone this morning. But I wanted to shift off of the skilled nursing facilities for a minute and just talk specifically about the ICU bed situation. So currently, we have, I think you said, 78 beds, and we, the hospitals have indicated they have the ability to surge up to about 294 beds, but we have concerns that the model is showing that we may exceed that. But I, I want the public and, and others to, you know, and folks here, to make sure that we all have clarity on what exactly that means as far as converting an ICU bed, converting a regular hospital bed into an ICU bed, because people may be concerned, does that mean we don't have enough ventilators? If I get, if I'm, if I'm sick and I need a ventilator, does that mean that I may not have one available? So can you just speak for a moment about the issues when, in regard to equipment versus the staffing requirements, and if we're getting any indication at all from the state that those staffing requirements for ICU may be relaxed in light of the, the situation that's going on statewide?
Supervisor Scrivner, through the chair. You're correct. So the conversion of a regular bed to an ICU bed is dependent on those two things, equipment and staffing. For equipment, most of it is ventilators, and we have, the hospitals have a stockpile of ventilators, and the county, public health, has a stockpile of ventilators also. The real issue is staffing.
Okay. So the ventilators are not the, are not the issue right now?
Not the immediate issue. No, sir.
Thank you.
Staffing is the issue, and you are correct. According to the hospital CEOs, the state has relaxed the staffing requirements.
And what, what were they? What, so was it, it was four to one versus two to one?
I think you're right. I think for an ICU bed, it was two to one, and...
Two nurses, two, or, I'm sorry, two patients per nurse?
Yes, sir. And then I think they've relaxed those. I, I think the wording was they're not enforcing those. And I think in, in a step-down situation, it's four to one. So they've relaxed it so that staffing is not as critical, but still, that will drive some of our ability to surge up to those higher numbers.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Supervisor Scrivner, are you going to be providing more information on your ad hoc, or?
I, excuse me, I know Supervisor Maggard wants to, wants to start off and, and speak about the loan program that's occurring with Mr. Zervis, and so I'll go ahead and defer.
Got it.
I just wanted to make sure that we had some clarity on what exactly the ICU challenge is.
Got it. Thank you so much, Supervisor Scrivner. Before we get to the loan issue, I'd like to go to Supervisor Couch and then try to address whatever issues with Mr. Constantine we have before going to the practicality of PPE and loan issues.
Matt, I have one other question for you. I'm sorry, before we jump to that. Thank you for indulging that.
Please do.
I think that graph that you showed us is illustrative. What I, and you can see that we have, well, you mentioned bending the curve.
Yes.
The only way I know that I could show somebody we've bent the curve is if I show them what the curve did look like a month ago, two months ago, whatever it was, and what the result has been since then. Have you archived what it looked like in March, what it looked like in April, and what we've done, and how it looks, how, what our actual numbers have, have done?
Yes, sir. So we, we, we do, the difficulty, of course, is we had only a little bit of data at that point. So it was really hard to model. So we were dependent on the state telling us three different modeling scenarios at percent compliance with social distancing. So they had a 30% compliant, 40%, and a 50% compliant.
True.
I can show you those, that, you know, when you saw the little squiggly line, it's so small at that point, it's really hard to extrapolate out. But if, right now, we're modeling along that 50% line, which was much better than we expected. So if we compare this 50% to where the other model showed at maybe 30 or 40%, it has dramatically brought down that top. It's important to know, when you bring it down, it does extend out.
Sure.
So it is pushing out some of our cases until the next year or two, but that's a manageable load that the hospitals can accommodate.
And that was the point of flattening the curve?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Can you show us that the next time you come back?
Sure.
Not, not today, but just the next time, show us what we were expecting. You understand the question?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Great idea, Supervisor Couch. Thank you. Any other questions of Mr. Constantine before we go to loan, the loan program and, and stuff on PPE?
I would make one other quick comment before you go. I just want to say thank you to Adventist Health. It's, it's amazing sometimes when you just pick up the phone and make a phone call. I called Kiyoshi and said, "Could you guys help us in Lamont?", and within a matter of days, just yesterday, they stood up a testing site in Lamont that they are staffing. So I want to thank them for that, and Good Samaritan, I, I want to, if you're not already working with them, Mr. Constantine, can I refer them to you? They would like to help staff our mobile unit in not just the 4th District, but a variety of the rural areas around the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Couch, for your leadership on that item. Supervisor Maggard, we'll come back to you for the loan program and whatever thoughts you have regarding our ad hoc.
Thank you. I, I want to thank Supervisor Scrivner for his laser focus on hospital capacity. That is the looming, the wolf that is closest to the shed, so to speak, for us. If there's anything that endangers people we love and serve, it is that. So I appreciate his, his laser focus on that. This is not, it is not, it is not the case with hospitals, but it is the case with at least one of these nursing facilities that they don't want to pay the going rate for staff. So they turn to us and ask us to provide them with staff. And the state, for example, says, "Well, they're your constituents. You, you should help them with staff." Well, the bottom line is, a private company is not willing to pay the going rate to put staff people in here. And as we go along, and the, it, it isn't just in Kern County that this issue with staffing is going to be the limiter on hospital capacity. It is all over the state that it will be the case. I, I suggest we need to be prepared to pay significantly more for those staff people, not only at nursing facilities, but at hospitals, and the use of care money, care dollars, it might be utilized in that fashion to make sure we have contracts ahead that, that obligate these pools of resources to be there. Do you want to say something about that?
Yes, sir. Supervisor Maggard, through the chair. I just want to point out that the call went out for help at one of our skilled nursing facilities. We put the message out, and Liberty Ambulance and Richcrest Hospital, Jim Suver, stood up and said, "We're here to help." They have employees that have been coming down to fill in gaps in the schedule, that normally have other shifts. They've allowed them to come down all the way to Bakersfield and to fill in nighttime shifts at little notice consistently for, for many, many days. So I do want to make sure that we recognize our own local individuals that stood up and helped, and they're still helping.
Good Samaritan Hospital is, they really are aspiring to be, and already are, a significant generous participant in this. A friend of mine was gravely ill, succumbing to COVID, a man in fabulous cardio and, and otherwise good shape, a bike rider, friend of mine, and at the Adventist Hospital saved his life. We're grateful that he, he was released on Saturday from the hospital, so we're very grateful for that. So the hospitals are doing a fantastic job, so we want to thank them for that. Okay. I, I wanted to focus for a moment on a second aspect of the county's efforts, and I want to thank my colleagues again for their support for this program, and that has to do with our small business relief program we have, the loans that we're making. I want to particularly thank this morning Jim Zervis, who is one of our, who is our Assistant CIO for the county, and Mac Avinzina, hi, Mac, who is our IT Director. They have, just as we are well ahead of the rest of the state with regard to our efforts to try to corral the issues with skilled nursing facilities, we are also way ahead of the state from every indicator that we can find with regard to these loan programs that we're doing. And I would like Mr. Zervis to give us a, a report on that and show us a, a little bit of a demonstration of, of that. I also don't want to go any further without thanking our CIO for his help in, in it as well. So, Mr. Zervis.
Thank you. Two guy problem here, so, okay. Thank you. Supervisor Maggard, through the chair. It's really my pleasure to give you an update on this program. Your board approved the Kern Small Business Relief Program by allocating $25 million of the CARES Act funding that this, the county received to fund small business relief loans for those businesses that were impacted by COVID-19. And the, and as a reminder, this program would lend up to $75,000 to individual businesses that were impacted by COVID-19. We started this program and, and launched it using four local lenders, Alta One, Credit Union, Valley Strong Credit Union, Mission Bank, and Valley Republic Bank to deliver this program, and we went live on May 26th. So we have about three weeks of, of data in order, lined up to show you, and it's been a successful rollout, and, and I'm happy to be able to kind of show you what's been going on with that program today. This week, what I'm showing, what I'm going to be showing you in a minute, this week will also be live reporting on our website and available to the public throughout the remainder of the program. So, you know, with no further ado, I think I'd like to share my screen with you and talk a little bit about what, what's, where we're at with, with the Small Business Relief Program. And we're branding this under the, the moniker of Kern Recovers. So we have a couple different relief products under Kern Recovers. This is the Small Business Relief Program. As I mentioned, we have about 25, well, we have $25 million allocated to this program. On the top graph, you can see we've spent $4.38 million so far. It took about a week before the county started to receive completed and vetted applications in order to start funding. We started this program focusing in on businesses that had not received federal PPP funding and were deemed nonessential by the governor, and, and so were unable to open or greatly impacted, such as restaurants, only able to operate in a very limited capacity. So for the first two weeks of this program, we exclusively funded those types of businesses. This Monday, we recently opened up to non PPP but essential businesses. So these were businesses that, yes, they've been impacted by COVID, but they were able to operate throughout the, throughout the pandemic, but still did not receive federal PPP funding. So these are all businesses that did not get assistance from the federal government. Of the $4.38 million spent, our average loan size is $22,300. So that says we're, we're targeting or we're, we're bringing this and delivering it to smaller businesses. They qualify as a multiplier of payroll, so inherently, these are businesses that, that are smaller by nature, as well as our program limitations of, of needing to be under $5 million in annualized revenue and under 50 employees. So we're really targeting local small businesses. At, at the $22,300, if, if you extrapolate that based on the $25 million for the program, if that were to hold, we'd be bringing aid to about 1,120 businesses. So we'd be impacting over 1,100 businesses with finance, direct financial support in Kern County. This program is available countywide, and to date, we funded 183 businesses. These are 183 businesses that didn't receive federal funding, that the county's been able to come in and provide direct financial support for. And that's across 95 different industries. So we've, we've really been able to broadly bring this program and deliver it countywide, so geographically over a really large area, but also to a very diverse group of businesses. On average, it's taking about 13.4 days to fund, and when we measure that, we're, that's a, that's a performance measurement on our part, and we're measuring the date of the application versus the date that the county sends money to the bank that the applicant's working with. It may take another couple days to actually fund that loan from the bank to the applicant, but these are hard dates that we know we can track and use as measurement points. 13.4 days. I will point out that this includes the essential businesses that we just started funding, and a lot of those applications came in right away and were put on hold for two weeks because we weren't prioritizing essential businesses. This, that number, before we opened up to essential businesses, was running about seven days. So we were running, we were funding the nonessential businesses, non PPP recipients, in about seven days. That's now gotten a little bit longer because, just to process the applications that had already been received. Now, what I, what I want to show you with this website is down below, our loans by industry, this is a dynamic page. So as, as we click on any one of these categories, say you want to know more about restaurants, the map now highlights the restaurants across the county that were receiving funding, and all of the program information in those tiles is now updated. So on average, our loans to full-service restaurants are averaging $48,500 per restaurant, and we funded 13 restaurants, for example. And if I were to click on, say, beauty salons, now we see where the beauty salons are located, spent $145,000 directly supporting beauty salons. Their average loans are $8,100 per beauty salon, so much, much smaller, but we've been able to fund 17 different beauty salons. And so this page, as you can see, is dynamic in that way, and, and people, the public, as well as yourselves, will be able to click on any one of these particular categories and, and see those, see those statistics updated. So, so this page will be live on the county's Kern Recovers website by the end of this week, most likely by the end of the day. So you'll, you'll see, the public will be able to go in and see how this program's doing. I will say, overall, talking to the, to the banks and kind of what's in the pipeline, we have several millions of dollars in applications headed our way. We're funding right now about $1 million a day in, in business assistance. Took a little time to ramp up, but that's the, the rate that we're operating at now. And, and we'll continue, you know, operating in, in this, in this way until we see demand start to fall off, at which time we'll consider opening this up to fund businesses that received federal PPP funding. Right now, the only distinction with people we're not funding at the moment is whether or not they received federal PPP funding. So the next step would be to open this program up to federal PPP recipients. I don't anticipate that happening before July. We have weekly calls with all the lenders where we talk about program demand, applications, what they're seeing on the front line, and what we're seeing from, from our review point, and, and, and that's, you know, that's a dynamic date. So we'll change that just depending on what we see with program availability and demand. You know, I, that's really what I have to present to you. This, this site will, will, will be live, like I said, today, and really want to thank ITS and Mac Avinzina for the hard work in developing such a useful tool and the transparency that it presents to the public with respect to where this federal funding is going specifically and how it's impacting the community.
I wanted to thank my colleagues for their commitment to make this happen. It is, when you step back and look at the federal program, the Payroll Protection Program, PPP loans, it's remarkable that the federal government has sent out, what is it, trillions of dollars in just a few months. It, it is way more remarkable than that on a much smaller scale, that the county of Kern, in three weeks, has this program out rolling. I mean, it is just, it's astounding how efficient and effective you guys have been. Imagine, one of the loans that I've noticed in here is a $650 loan to a business. Now imagine that it was so important to that little business that they chased a $650 loan to try to make the difference in whether or not they can survive. And a bank, or a credit union... And a bank, or a credit union, I don't, I didn't notice which one of the institutions did it, they gave as much vigor to a $650 loan as they did to all the others that are involved. I'm just so proud of not only our board, not only our staff, but our community for making this program work like this. So, I just could not give you more of a pat on the back. And to Mac Avinzina, your ability to demonstrate the results the way you have, Mr. Avinzina, is, is, you know, I don't throw words out carelessly, but it is remarkable that you've been able to demonstrate that. And I hope we can show our colleagues up and down the state how they might be able to do the same and not only save the dreams and aspirations of thousands of people here and the jobs of thousands of people here, but all over the state, imagine what we can do. So, I'm just so proud of you guys and my board for being supportive of this. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Supervisor Maggard. And if I may, Madam Chair, just a quick comment. You know, thank you for the kind words. I want to remind everybody, including the public, that this is a forgivable loan program. So, as long as this money is spent according to the program guidelines, it's fully forgiven, and these loans do not need to be repaid. And I also want to, to advertise out to the public, if you are a business in Kern County, a small business in Kern County that did not receive federal PPP funding, contact one of the four lenders, go to our website, you are eligible for this program.
Well, to Jim and Mac, I appreciate you ushering us into the 21st century. I think that this program is a leader, well, we are leaders in the state to Supervisor Maggard's point. And thank you for your expression of gratitude to these two in particular for really changing the game in Kern County, in particular, informing the public of where their tax dollars are going. This is their money at the end of the day. It is not the board's money, it's not the federal government's money. This is the taxpayers' money, returning it to them in a fashion that is expedited and quick and transparent, I think is a truly remarkable accomplishment, echoing the words of Supervisor Maggard. So, thank you so much. Supervisor Scrivener, did you want to add or close out anything on the ad hoc committee?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, thank you Supervisor. And Supervisor Maggard, are you done with the ad hoc presentation?
I am, Madam Chair. Thank you for your indulgence.
Thank you very much. To my other colleagues, before we move on, Supervisors Mick Gleason and Couch, anything? Okay, thank you very much. Do we need any action on this item? Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. We are going to move on to item number 30, under our county administrative office, Mr. Alsop and Mr. Zervis again. This is a re, excuse me, proposed program to provide personal protective equipment, also called PPE, to Kern County small businesses as an aid for reopening and adjusting to new business practices to meet COVID-19-related guidelines. I've shared with you, Mr. Zervis, and I believe also Ryan, that it is probably the number one request I hear from folks, from churches on down to small businesses, where are we going to get this? How long do we need to keep them? There really is a sense that there won't be enough, or how do we get to it? And is this some endless need we'll have? It's a, it's a source of a lot of stress, and it's wonderful that we are coming in and feeling such a need that is, for an issue that is so heavily on the hearts and minds of so many people in Kern County. So, thank you. It is a big deal, and we really appreciate you closing the gap for the county through you on this issue. So, I'm not sure, Ryan, if you're first or Zervis, but the floor is yours.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. It's, it's my pleasure to present this, this program for your consideration today. On May 5th, your board approved the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act, or the CARES Act, initial utilization plan for the, for the coronavirus relief funds that the county received. And that plan included a $10 million allocation to support the reopening of small businesses impacted by COVID-19. That is really the pool of funding that we're looking to utilize in order to implement this program, in order to take some of that $10 million and transition it into, or use it in a tangible way in order to support small businesses as they reopen in dealing with this, this post-COVID guidelines. And PPE is the number one request that, that we've heard so far. So, this is, the Kern Recovers PPE Support Program would accomplish providing this support by providing personal protective equipment and possibly other items such as sanitation supplies at no cost to businesses. The initial budget for this program is $5 million of the $10 million allocation that I just spoke of. And, and this would be used over roughly a 60-day period for the county to use our competitive purchasing practices to competitively source and purchase bulk quantities of PPE. We would then distribute it to a network of county-owned locations throughout the county. We've identified 16 locations that are all owned and operated by the county and available for use, where we would staff for distribution of PPE and supplies to small businesses in Kern County. The criteria that we're working with at the moment is, is businesses that have fewer than 200 employees and have a physical presence in Kern County. So, the, the business location that the PPE is going to support is actually within Kern County. There is nothing magical about the 200 number. It's a number that, that we picked to try to bring support to our smaller businesses, and, and that seemed like an appropriate cutoff. This would supply, businesses will schedule these pickups, they will call a phone number or contact through a website, our folks over at ETR who will be staffing and managing this program. They will receive a call, they will verify the business information, they will contact the business to verify the individual picking up the equipment, and is authorized to do so from, from the business. They will provide a pickup time and location to that business that they can come and, and get that allocation. We will provide up to a two-week supply of PPE based on an employee count, and may have some limiting factors based on supply. But the intent is to provide enough for a two-week period so that businesses don't have to come back every few days in order to get more supplies. Our goal for this program is to impact 5,000 specific businesses and, and, and do so by delivering these PPE supplies to them. I mentioned that we will be using county facilities, the locations that have been identified in your staff report, and we've included a, a map of those locations with, with a 20-mile radius drawn around each location to indicate prospective drive times to make sure that we're providing coverage throughout the county. And we believe we're doing that. And these locations are all libraries that are currently not open to the public, vets' halls or administration buildings, or ETR locations that the county maintains. So, the goal is to utilize county existing facilities so that we're not incurring additional costs in, in site locations or third parties, to utilize county employees and be able to use this, this CARES Act funding to pay for those employees, to keep them working in a, in a way that brings this support directly to the businesses that are being impacted. We're working on the details right now. We've got staff at ETR that has stepped up graciously to help lead the rollout of this program. And, and we're working really on a daily basis in outlining that initial order if, if approval happens today, and securing those locations in the staffing plan in order to, to bring this out. We are targeting a July 1st implementation date. So, we've, we've got a couple of weeks here while we work out some of those details, and, and we'll be open early, early in July. So, that's, I'd, I'd be happy to answer any questions. At this point, what is recommended is that your board approve the Kern Recovers PPE Support Program and authorize the CIO to implement. I will add that we have worked very closely with the back-to-business small groups. Teresa Hitchcock in our office, who has been on, on all of those calls, helped us to design some surveys. We reached out to those different business groups, took their survey information, and with that, use that in order to, to give us feedback in what types of PPE, what types of supplies would be most meaningful to them. Based on that feedback, we're currently targeting masks, gloves in three different sizes, specifically disinfectant wipes, and hand sanitizers. And, and we've actually identified some details in each one of those categories based on the feedback that we've gotten from the businesses themselves. So, that's, that's an overview and the recommended action. I would be happy to answer any questions that you or the public would have on this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Zervis. Supervisor Couch has a question. Are churches eligible to receive any of this PPE?
Yes. We aren't distinguishing between types of businesses, for-profit, nonprofit. It does have to be a business entity of some sort. So, assuming that that church is organized as a, as an entity, then yes.
So, a nonprofit entity?
Correct.
Okay, thank you so much. I hope our churches are not businesses, but, yeah, you never know. Supervisor Couch?
Thank you. The unintended consequence of this, and I think it's a great thing that you're, a great program you've come up with, is that I was contacted recently by, when they heard about this and saw it on the agenda, by a supplier locally that had swelled their inventory of the very items you're talking about because they were ready to supply it to local businesses that they have already sold lots of stuff to. How do we sort of balance stepping into and impacting those local businesses that are suppliers of that type of material?
That's a, that's a, that's a good concern. And, and I would say on a couple of fronts. One, our program won't meet all of the PPE needs in the county. It financially won't be able to. I think it'll make a difference. It will help those that are in need. There'll be a lot of businesses that don't, don't need to or want to deal with a government program in order to get these supplies. Maybe more efficient for them to order directly. Maybe their business model is such that they don't have a big demand for PPE. But regardless, we're, we're not going to be meeting all of their needs. So, there will be businesses that need it. I would also...
You're going to go out to, you're going to go out to and look to bid. They may be able to sell...
That was my next comment. So, the other side is we, this is a open competitive process for bidding, and we will be issuing requests for quotes. Anyone that supplies this type of material, and I've had a couple reach out to me already, and we've provided that information to Purchasing and General Services who's handling the, the bidding and quote process. So, contact us. We'd love to put any local businesses on this quote list specifically so they have the opportunity to, to bid for this. Now, I will say, we are operating with federal funding here. This isn't local funding. So, there is no local preference that we can offer, but we can certainly make sure that they have the opportunity to be competitive and, and quote, to supply the program.
Let me, I will pass along those names to you.
Great.
Right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Zervis. And thank you for being authentic to the rules. I think that helps us. Any other, Supervisor Couch, you're done? Okay. What do we need at this point? Should we open for public comment, Ms. Kraus? Okay, fabulous. Do we have any comments either in writing or waiting?
We do not. No public comment for this item.
Okay. Well, this is exciting. I hope we get the news out and issue some information that the public can be aware of this. Often, we offer great opportunities, folks just don't know about it. So, I think it'd be good, Ryan, for us to be aggressive about that and just help people get us through this. We are going to get through it, but it'll take all of us working together. So, this is such a big part of it. Zervis, thank you so much. Ryan, thank you.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion. And a second, please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all ayes.
Thank you. We're going to move to item number 31, also under our CIO, and that is a proposed sole source agreement with Community Action Partnership of Kern for food delivery services to vulnerable persons in Kern County as a result of COVID-19 public health emergency from June 16, 2020 through December 31, 2020, in an amount not to exceed $2 million. Mr. Zervis, thank you so much. I, I do want to add for the public that my utter gratitude to WISPA, the Western States Petroleum Association, who back in the very beginning of this contacted me and said, "We've got gift cards, we want to get them out to the public." We use those to help volunteers deliver food to the seniors in our community that were impacted by having to stay home or frequently home alone, isolated, dealing with this all by themselves, which is, you know, a horrific idea. But really, hats off to Lido at Senior Center, WISPA, for coming together and making sure that we had a creative way quickly to disseminate dollars that can be spent and used to, to help our most vulnerable. As often is the case, it takes some time to get a government program up and running. But thank you for the emphasis on this. And again, to WISPA, hats off, what great partners they are. Floor is yours.
Yes, Madam Chair and members of the board, I'm happy to present this item to you today. This is a, an agreement with Community Action Partnership of Kern for food delivery services to vulnerable persons in Kern County in response to COVID-19. On May 5th, as part of that allocation of the, the initial allocation of coronavirus relief funds, the funding that was made available through the Federal CARES Act, that plan included a $2 million allocation to provide food, safety, net services to persons or insensitive groups that might be in danger of, of contracting the coronavirus. The, the goal of this program is to provide, provide food to people over the age of 65 because that demographic has been deemed by the, the health officials to be most at risk for COVID, or one of the groups most at risk for COVID, in order to, to decrease their number of trips to a supermarket or out in public where they would be in close contact and potentially contract COVID-19. So, that, that is the intent of this program. We are partnering with Community Action Partnership of Kern because they run the county's largest food bank system. In fact, they run one of the largest food bank systems in the state. They have extensive experience in delivering a very cost-effective program to deliver food to those in need throughout the county. And usually, those programs are, are income-based, helping those less fortunate. In this case, utilizing that same network, we're able to, to address the COVID risk group, namely those that are over 65. This program would actually deliver product to the doorstep of these individuals. We're budgeted right now to deliver this program to 3,000 individuals across the county and, and to do so over a six-month period. So, this would be a, a monthly delivery of a 70-pound box of non-perishable food plus some additional perishable items. Contains 70 pounds of food. Additionally, it will contain some cleaning or disinfectant-type product, and, and it may be supplemented with other fresh fruits or vegetables that are contributed to the, to the CAP-K food, food bank network. The difference between a lot of the other types of, of food support programs is that this, this includes a delivery aspect. So, an individual will call the 211 program with CAP-K. They have the, the system set up to vet the individual, put them on the delivery list. They then take that name and schedule a, a time for delivery. They, they deliver that product, they actually contact that individual again to confirm that, that delivery, location, and time. And afterwards, they make contact with that individual again in order to make sure they receive the product. So, so in addition to providing that tangible food support, it's also a touch point that gives them a call, a contact to these isolated, you know, folks over 65 to make sure that, that if there's any other needs that need to be addressed, they run a variety of other programs, that they could, gives them an opportunity to, to discuss those as well. So, there's really, that makes them a, a good, a good partner for this program. So, this would utilize $2 million over a six-month period to deliver a monthly supply, 70-pound, 70-pound box of food to an individual. I didn't know this, but, but, but maybe you do. A 70-pound box of food is roughly 35 meals. They figure two pounds of food per meal. So, we're talking about 35 meals to, to someone that, that signs up for this, this program at, at no cost. I think that's the main points of, of the program. I know we have someone from CAP-K on the line that is happy to discuss the program and their experience with you, and I am happy to answer any questions as well. The, the recommended action today is to approve the sole source agreement with the Community Action Partnership of Kern for food delivery services in an amount not to exceed $2 million from June 16, 2020 to December 31, 2020, and authorize the chairman to sign the agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Zervis. I know that Jeremy Tobias, who provides absolutely unparalleled leadership in the nonprofit sector in this community and has for some time, and has my deepest respect, is waiting. I see Supervisor Couch and Gleason would also like to comment last time. Supervisor Gleason?
Real quick, I noticed a good presentation, Jim. Every time you addressed the fact that you, this program was directed to people who was over 65, you looked at me. And then Magg.
Don't comment.
But then he looked back at you.
Just smile, Zervis. Okay, so, we'll hear from Jeremy Tobias at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tobias, if you would unmute your mic by pressing star six, and you're, you'll be ready to provide comments to the board.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
We can. We can.
Thank you, good morning, Madam Chair and board members. I'm Jeremy Tobias, CEO of CAP-K. We've worked very closely with your staff and the CAO office to develop this plan to serve the vulnerable, at-risk senior population in Kern County. As we heard earlier this morning from public health, it is important to lower public interactions and contact points, particularly for the at-risk insensitive populations. Our CAP-K food bank serves the entire county through our network of mini pantry, commodity, and senior sites. We'll use our 2-on-1 program for the residents to call, receive information, and enroll for the program. And our goal is to keep this simple, it should be a simple process for a resident to call and become eligible and sign up for the program. The plan is to drop the items on the doorstep without personal interaction. The client will be informed and know when to expect the package, and we will conduct a follow-up check-in via telephone with the client to confirm receipt, and also it provides, staff mentioned, it provides another opportunity for a wellness check-in, et cetera, to see if there's anything else the client might need. We anticipate to serve 3,000 participants a month, and we are excited to roll this program out to the public. We understand the tight timeframe, the six-month timeframe, and we are prepared to meet that obligation and all the other obligations of this program. I want to thank CAO staff and the county board supervisors for considering this program. I think it's a wonderful program, very worthwhile, and we're excited to get started. Thank you very much.
Jeremy, thank you so much for all that you do, and the 211 process, I think, is so clever, and we need to be advertising that as much as we can. It's simple, and it's consistent with the culture of 411, as you know. I just think it's really a clever and fabulous way to serve our community. So thank you so much. Any other comments from the public?
No ma'am.
Okay, no comments from the public, we'll close the public hearing. Gentlemen, any remarks? Supervisor Scribner?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Zervis, for your presentation. I wanted to ask just specifically about outreach. I know that a lot of these folks may be, well, I guess I should pose this a question. We have our Meals on Wheels program that operates through Aging and Adult Services, and so do we see crossover between that clientele and this program where we're serving some of the same folks?
Yes, there certainly could be crossover.
So outside of those that we already have on our rolls, so to speak, that we know are eligible and have identified that they're in need, what are the plans for outreach specifically to the outlying areas of the county, you know, for folks in Boron or Fraser Park or, you know, some of our other small unincorporated communities?
Sure, so we're going to do our best to market the program. You know, we will do press releases, we will be in social media, we will try to roll the program out in those traditional ways, and we'll also utilize CAP-K's network of individuals that work in this space exclusively, as well as adult and aging, to try to directly market to that population. They may not be as active in some of the social media and media outlets, but we'll do all of the above.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Some of those communities that we have have maybe only one small grocery store or market, and some don't have really, you know, any major grocery stores, and so marketing to those small communities, I think, should be a high priority for us, so I appreciate that. Thank you. A motion to approve.
Well said Supervisor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please cast your votes.
Thank you, the motion is approved, all eyes.
Thank you again, Mr. Zervis, to our CAO, Ryan. We continue to lead in many regards in Kern, something to be very proud of. Number 47 today in our last item in the morning's agenda is a request to delay annual health permit billing by three months to October 1, 2020, and waive annual cost of living adjustment for 2020 in an estimated decrease in annual revenue for fiscal year 2021 in the amount of $140,000 due to economic impacts of COVID-19. Mr. Constantine, you're back.
Madam Chair, thank you. Very quickly, in my first time in my 26-year history with environmental health, we're asking to delay billing for our approximately 10,000 different businesses in the county by three months to allow them time to reopen and to start and to resume business, and also to forego that COLA piece. So that'll push everything back three months, it'll cause some confusion, but I think it's the right thing to do, and it's a reasonable, small action that we can do to help our local businesses.
Move and approve.
Supervisor Couch, there are rules, and one of those rules is public input, thank you very much. No, I appreciate your expedited response there. Do we have members, that's a great presentation, thank you Matt, and do we have public input?
We do not have any members of the public that wish to comment.
Okay, and we didn't receive any in writing? Supervisor Couch has predictive ability that is ingenious, so thank you Supervisor. Yes, unparalleled. Okay, so colleagues, Supervisor Scribner, is that punched in for now?
That was the last item, Madam Chair. I'll second the motion.
Excellent, thank you so much. We have a motion, a very enthusiastic motion, and a lackluster second. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Excellent, thank you so much to the fabulous county team working under literally impossible circumstances. We're leading in some very critical ways, and that makes me proud to know that we're in this together and that we have such fabulous expertise at the table. With that said, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, we'll be back at 2. Thank you Supervisor Couch, so moved.